All right. Good evening, everybody. It's January 24th. Thanks for joining us at our regular town board meeting of the town of Reinbeck. Would everybody like to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I have a pledge of allegiance.
Which is stamped, "One nation under God." In this liberty.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of. Uh, well, first of all, let's have a motion to approve our prior minutes of December 13th, 2021, January 4th, 2022, for our regular town board meeting and January 4th, 2022, for our reorganizational meeting. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks. May I have a second?
Second.
Who was that? Chauncey?
Alan.
Oh, thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions from the? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are the opposed passes unanimously, Jim? Um, Warren, I see that you're on mute. You may want to unmute yourself. Before we dive into this, and I think I'll take some presentations first. Or present or discussion first, I have a couple of announcements. One is that our town and county tax bill has been and library bill and fire department bills have been mailed out. They were mailed out last week. All taxes are due to the town clerk or our bank by February 28th without a penalty. Everybody, you can mail it into our bank in Buffalo as discussed, or you can bring it into town hall from 10 to 2 Monday through Friday. But as COVID infections are out, we're really recommending that you mail it in. You can call our tax collector, who's our town clerk with any questions. Joanie, did you want to say something?
Yes, it's Monday to Thursday.
Monday to Thursday, 10 to 2. Thanks, Joe. Also, Town Hall has some, a very few, a couple of dozen leftover COVID tests. If you're a resident of the town outside the village and you would like a COVID test, please call our town clerks at Town Hall. One more thing is that today, 38 years ago today, in 1984, Roger Newkirk became our dog control officer. So I want to congratulate and thank Roger for 38 years of really warm caring for the dogs in this town. So thank you, Roger. We're, we're happy and proud to have you. You do a great job for us and for the dogs of the town and village.
Dogs are barking for him.
Sorry, oh, your dog is barking for him. Great. I guess let's go uh to the discussion items, to the bonding of the recreation field first. We have Warren Raplansky here to talk about this and Michael DeColo, who is chair of the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee. Warren's going to take us through the process that we need to do to bond this and move forward, and we'll talk finances and any other questions. I think Michael has a short presentation for us on the environmental aspects of an artificial turf field.
Right.
So.
So I did review my, the files that I have on this, and I do have a few questions. I don't know whether Michael can answer this or somebody else from the board. Is this soccer field part of a, what phase of the development Thompson Mazzarella Park Development Project is this? I know that there was a phasing, phasing plan, and we finished phase one, I believe.
This is phase two.
Yeah, I think it's two.
This is phase two.
Is, is, is this the only part of phase two, or is it a component of a phase?
No, there could be additional phases. We also approved two baseball fields, but those are not going in.
Okay, so this is the only project that's part of phase two?
I believe the.
I got it, Michael. The pavilion was phase two as well. Phase one was all.
Pavilion was phase one, wasn't it?
No, phase one was all of the infrastructure. It was the road, it was the water conduit and the electricity. Phase two was the pavilion as is the, the artificial turf playing fields. This is one of three that have been approved on master plan.
So, so we did bonding for the, for the pavilion, if I recall. But was the turf, the soccer field part of that bonding, or is this is a, we're bonding, we're paying for this separately?
No. Yeah, then we've paid off the bond for the pavilion already. So now we're bonding again for the field.
Okay. All right. So the, the first thing that we're going to need to do is to get a, an engineer who's going to provide us with an estimate of the total cost for this project. I, I see that we have something from a Clark companies are. Have we retained them, or how are they involved in this project?
Oh, Mike, we, we have a handshake agreement with them and we would like to retain them. But Michael, why don't you address this part? Michael or Josh, actually. Oh, Josh just said his computer just restarted. Hold on. So let's let Josh and Michael take this. If you could just give us a second. Or Michael, why don't you start and Josh?
Um, so we've, we got three preliminary estimates for the field. This, this vendor Clark can do a cooperative purchase agreement. Uh, which has, I, I, you guys probably know more about how that works in terms of the, the municipal government. And uh the park committee would, would really like to use this vendor. They built the field at Bard. Uh, which is probably the best quality turf field in the area and maybe one of the best quality turf fields in all of D3 sports. Uh, so they're, they're, they're a really, really good outfit.
So with these, so was this committee that got in touch with them and got them on board, or is?
I, I put Josh in touch with three different vendors. These guys do a cooperative purchase agreement, so they're getting three bids on every part of the project. They're getting competitive bids. Um, I, you probably understand that, that organization a little bit better than I do.
Michael, they're, they're on a list, as I understand it, either on a state or a county list, like buying a truck off a, a state list, Warren, which listed is, I need for you to confirm with them.
Yeah, we, we have to confirm whether, you know, how, how they were retained and whether we went through the correct process to retain them. But if, if they are going to be the engineer, assuming that they've been properly retained, I'm not familiar, to be honest, with a state list for, for engineers, but maybe, maybe that's the case.
No, but the field, yeah, the field is on a list, is my understanding.
I have to get more information on that. We, we need to have a contract with them to start this project and that has to be negotiated. We have to know how much they're going to charge to provide the engineering services for this project. We can't do it on a handshake.
No, they, they have produced a bid that includes those services.
Yep. And Warren, we haven't intended to do it on a handshake. We need you to, you know, draft all the stuff for us. We'd like to retain.
I see this. Is, is this, were you talking about the $1,296,715? Is that what we're talking about?
That's the last bid, isn't it, Michael?
Yes.
And that includes their engineering services?
Yes.
I'm, I'm just not seeing it in in the bid, or maybe I'm wrong. But i- in any event, we, we have, we have to, we have to get a contract with them and we have to make sure that we, we have a firm estimate of the total cost of this project. If we are going to be utilizing them and if we've gone through the correct process for retaining them, which I'm not positive of uh, at, at this point. So once we've determined what the total cost of the project is, including engineering, um, site plan, application, um, legal, whatever else we need for the entire soccer field project, we have to figure out how, how we're going to pay for this. And we need to know how, how it's going to be paid for. So do we have any idea how, let's assume the project is a million?
So.
Well, let me ask you a question. Has the project cost increased by virtue of the fact that it's going to be a a synthetic turf? Is that, is that the case?
The million two ninety-six is the increased and final contract amount to deliver us everything except of two add-ons, fencing and a conduit for electric where lights will go later. And the fencing, he's getting us the price, but it's around $50,000 and we don't know what the electrical conduit will be.
So, so now the question I had is going from a synthetic to a going from grass to synthetic, how, how has that increased the cost?
It's a. We never got a formal estimate to install a natural grass field there. The original uh master plan specifies a turf field. About 10 years ago or eight years ago, the soccer league went through the process of paying for engineering to determine whether putting a natural grass field in the place of the same area of the turf field would prevent that from being built at, at a future date and would affect drainage on the rest of the park, which it would not have. So we, we got permission to go ahead and uh, cost out building a natural grass field. That project did not happen, and we can talk about some of the reasons for that. They really have to do with why we're moving forward with turf now. But it's, you, you can't compare a single grass field to a turf field in terms of cost.
All right. So let's assume that the cost is somewhere around a million 296,715 with two add-ons you mentioned. I, I need the documentation on the add-ons. How, how, how have we projected that we're paying for this?
So we have a 300,000 coming from the Reinbeck Soccer League and private donors. We have, how much do we have saved up, Josh? 80 capital projects budget?
I think so, yes.
And the rest has to come from bonding.
I'm sorry, how much was from?
Broadly speaking, we're bonding 800,000, right? Because we have 200,000, just roughly speaking.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you say we have 200,000 cash on hand? Is that?
In a capital projects uh line.
So the rest has to be bonded?
Yeah, about 800,000, depending on where these add-ons come in. So the soccer league will have to come up with and plus an additional $90,000 coming from Porch Fest, which could, would pay for the, for the add-ons.
I think the simpler math is the town of Reinbeck is putting in a million. Some portion of that is bonded. And then the remaining, looking for contributions to cover the rest.
Donations.
So, so for a bond of this size, we're, we're, we're going to need bond counsel the same way we did for the phase one. Uh, that'll be Douglas Goodfriend's firm, and he's going to require that we have firmly all of this cash on hand. Except for the, um, for the bonding. Uh, when he, when he prepares the resolution for the town board to pass. In other words, we can't pass that resolution. So we have to confirm and make sure that we've got, get the 300,000 in hand, that we have the capital fund of 200,000. We can use that fund for this project. And then if we're getting 90,000 from Porch Fest, that has to be confirmed.
That, and then. Porch Fest money, the Porch Fest money is, is projected. They have a, I think 25 or 30,000 now, and they have dedicated their next three events to this project.
We can't, we can't do it.
I understand. That's why I'm bringing it up. That's why I'm bringing it up.
We will only be spending what we have, Michael, we will only be spending money we have funding for.
Yeah, so we have to know what we have on hand because.
If we need the electrical conduit, we need that money in advance of going into the bonding. So.
So, so this firm's got to give us a contract and they've got to give us total projected cost, including everything from soup to nuts, so we know what we're spending. And, and when, by the time we get this to bond council, all of the money on hand, except for the bonding, has to be there. In other words, we, we can't pass a resolution authorizing moving forward with the project and the bonding.
We understand.
Unless we have it in hand.
That's understood.
Yep.
So that's the next process. So um, I, I think we need to, I, I, I need to see the documentation, you know, about the retention of Clark and what process was gone through to retain them to make sure that we can utilize them without having to put it out to competitive bidding or, or RFP. And then we'll need a contract from them. They have to give us a formal contract if they're going to work for us, and I have to review and approve that. And then we need the estimate of cost from them, and then we have to line up all of our finance, our the, the monies that we have in hand uh, before we pass a bond resolution similar to what we did for phase one, and that'll be prepared by a bond, by our bond council.
What is our next, what do we have to do at our next meeting, Warren?
Well, what I'd like to see is the contract from Clark and get information on how, how they were retained to make sure that it was, doesn't violate any of the competitive bidding requirements, so from, you know, New York State law. Um, and then they have to get me a contract and they, if they could do that by next meeting, that would be great. And.
We need it by, by next week, Michael, so it can, we need it uh the Wednesday before the meeting, Michael and Josh, so we can get it on the.
So assuming we can.
Possible.
Yeah, assuming we, so we're not using West and Sampson. They were the ones we used for the first.
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, I'll need all that in hand if you want to try to move this forward quickly. I know that you're before the planning board uh, on an application for the amendments for the site plan approvals change to the.
Change back to turf, yeah.
For the natural, sorry, I know there were some questions that town board members, I know Elizabeth had about environmental impact of using a turf field rather than, I mean, a synthetic rather than a turf. Now, we can, we can go over that and, and, and do our own in-house environmental review, or I'm assuming the planning board is part of their approval for the, um, for the change in the project. We'll, we'll want to do an environment or a supplemental environmental review on that issue. So maybe that they'll do the work for the town.
We do that environmental impact study already. At one point, Warren, we did a SWIP study to move from grass to artificial turf and went through the whole process. I believe we go.
The original, the original plan, which went through environmental review, had the turf field in it. The only, the only thing that's been done recently is to determine whether a grass field would have any negative impacts on the original plan and drainage of, of the turf field. Um, New York State Department of Health has a, a document that which I attached to what I submitted to, to Alan and you guys, that talks about environmental impacts of artificial turf and, and infill. It's been very, uh, it's been studied with a lot of peer-reviewed studies since we started this process, and there's really good documentation that it's, it is not a hazardous alternative to natural grass.
So would it be reasonable to, uh, since this is going to be before the planning board and they're going to review this, to wait to see what the planning board does in terms of the environmental review of the change in the project?
I wanted to have a um, to, to, for, wait for them for, for what, Warren, to discuss the impact of an artificial turf field?
Yeah, unless you feel you have enough in, in, information now to discuss it intelligently.
Yeah, Michael has prepared a short presentation. I was going to come back to that at the end of the meeting if you want to, or would you like to be here for it?
No. I can't. I don't really care, but I, if you want me to be here, I will.
Not necessary. I've been getting a lot of calls, input from residents asking why the artificial field. So I wanted to publicly discuss it and have a short presentation.
I'll, I'll hang around. I don't, I don't mind being here for that.
I, I'd like to go through the meeting and then do it at the end, I think.
Yeah.
So is that all right, guys?
Okay, so what, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put all of this in writing so that it's clear what, what we need moving forward, uh, what all the moving parts are and what the requirements are, what I want to see. I just wanted to discuss it with her. I, I have a better understanding of where we are and what we're doing, so I'll put that together for everybody in the next couple of days.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Perfect. Josh and Michael will be in touch with you to move this along. Yep. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Do you want me to talk about the environmental stuff now, or we're going to do that?
No, I think I want to come back to it, if that's okay.
It's fine.
Because I want Warren to stay, there's word to, um. The only thing I wanted to talk about while Warren's here, unless anybody else has anything, is uh, we're going to discuss moving forward or not with our community choice aggregate. So we were contacted again by.
Jeff Demans.
Uh, I'm sorry, who?
Jeff Demans.
Jewel, um, yeah, offering us again to be a part of the contract to move forward. And what I said was that the reason why we soured on it is because the rate on the last bid was so far above what Central Hudson was charging that we couldn't in good conscience enter into an agreement with them and commit our citizens to a higher rate. Um, and we had sort of decided as a board that we would put our eggs into the community solar law revision as um, a way of offering people renewable energy, not the community choice aggregate. So this is for the town board. I guess, Josh, why don't you take this over? Is this something we want to go through again and see where the rates come out, or have we decided that we're, you know, not proceeding with this?
I mean, you know, it's the devil's in the details. It all sounds really great. And then we go down the road of having 10 to 12 mandated public meetings over three months, and then we get the rates and they're not there. So happy to roll the dice again, but I, I mean, it just was, it was a bit of a letdown last time, so.
Yeah, and personally, I'm not committing any residence to a rate that's higher than what Central Hudson charges. I, I just couldn't do it.
I don't think you'd have to.
Well, with this particular model, they were, it's an opt-in, it's an opt-in model where you have to opt, or suit the opt-out model. We have to.
Yeah, we do, Mike.
Like it only works.
No, but what I mean is that there are other options.
Michael, Michael, this isn't a discussion. We're, this is a bull item. So I mean, we're, yeah, I think we need to figure out what we're doing.
I mean, I suspect, I suspect renewable energy will be economical at some point. I'm not sure it's really now, but what do I know?
Yeah, we'd be part of a consortium buying from Jewel uh through uh, through a vehicle of just renewable energy, and the rate is set. When we went through the bidding process the last time, the rate was 12, 13, 14% higher than Central Hudson, and we said we can't do it. So basically, what the law is for community choice is committing our residents to community choice. They would have to opt out to go back to Central Hudson, and I'm not going to opt anyone into personally to a rate that's higher than what Central Hudson um, charges. So I don't know what you guys want to do. We just need to discuss it. Any feelings, Chance?
Be in favor of, of doing, at least finding out what their rates have changed to. This is not mutually exclusive with community solar. If we did both, it would be even better.
Conceptually.
Sorry?
What, Josh?
Conceptually, it would, yeah.
Well, okay. But I, how much effort does it take on our part to get their rates?
Not much, I don't think, but we'll see. I can ask. I'll ask.
Yeah.
Chance, do you have any feelings?
Let's ask. Um, I certainly voted not to do it before because it was too expensive and if there's a if it's worth taking another look, I, I, I got a little confused because Josh, you referred earlier to several meetings in 10 to 12 steps before we knew what the rate was. But now you're indicating we can probably find out without going through all that?
I'm just saying, well, I think to Alan's point, we could ask what the current rates are and, and see, but their process mandates amount of public input before they then put it out to bid and get the actual rates. It's, it's a market meeting at a time and place, not now, three months in the future.
Yeah, I understand.
What do you, you, I mean, I'm, if you, we've been through this before and it was elusive and a bit maddening because it was so elusive and broke that we, we didn't know. But Josh, if you have the stomach for it and want to do it again, let's tell them to go ahead and see where the rates are.
Sure, fair enough.
You want to come, you want to come back to us at the next meeting?
Sure.
You know, is, is it possible also that maybe Josh could be in touch with other communities that actually have signed on to this?
Well, Red.
And, and have a track record and to let us know whether they've been satisfied with this?
Well, we are, we are through the Supervisors and Mayor's Association, and it, people are saying it's all about the rate and, and, and how your town reacts to it. You don't want to, you don't want to commit your residents to a higher rate than what they're already paying. It's just. I mean, Red Hook has done it. Several commu- communities in, in Duchess and Columbia and Ulster have done it.
But totally reasonable point, Warren. I'll see who, who the, because it's been, it's been before the ban. It's been almost two years at this point, so I'll look into it.
Okay. All right, um. Okay, anything else? Let's go back to our, our, is there anything that anyone wants Warren to stay on here? I don't think we need you for anything else that we would love you, Warren. I don't want to keep you from your.
I'd love to be here, but if, if you let me go, that's fine, and you can, if, someone should fill me in on the discussion that you had with, about the uh, environmental nature of the field. There, there was one resolution on the board, uh, on, on, on your agenda that I put on, and that's just a housekeeping uh, resolution for the Garden Way Road. We, we acquired title has been transferred to us, so there's a resolution that I prepared that we're required to pass tonight, and, and then the highway superintendent will do his own uh, order laying out the road and although we've already taken it over, it's, that will end the process. Uh, it will now be officially a town road.
What does it mean to lay out the road? Put it on a map?
It, it, it's wording actually from the highway law. I think it's section 217, that when you, when you acquire title to the road, then you, the town board passes the resolution laying out the road. I, the resolution is laying out the road. I don't know. It's, it's a statutory term. I didn't invent it. It has, it's not, it's, you know, it's not nefarious or, you know, salacious.
Okay, well, we're going to take care of that tonight. Would you?
Okay, great. If, yeah, I don't think you'll have any questions. So I'll, I'll get this to you in the next couple of days and then just fill me in on what happened on your discussion afterward.
It'll all be, yeah, it'll all be, we can send you the white paper too. Michael has, we'll email you the Word Doc and it'll be posted for everybody on our website.
Okay, great. All right. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Warren.
Well.
Uh, okey-dokey. Let's go back to our agenda. Uh, anybody else have any announcements or committee or liaison reports?
Oh, the only, the, you and I spoke earlier about the fact that Jim is almost, Jim Levy, the planning guy, uh, almost has the, the, the. The 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 uh change to the law to enable community solar, and we're doing that as a. Addendum to the current zoning law. Probably add a couple of pages. Rather than to go back and modify what we already have. So.
Will we need a meeting with Warren on this before we pass it?
Probably.
Okay, so if you just make sure that happens before our next town board meeting. Great, um, anybody else? Okay, um. Uh I need a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-two oh forty-six consenting to the laying out of Garden Way. Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any comment? Bob, you've read this and you're fine with it, Bob Wyatt?
Yes, very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on that, too. We took the road over right in time for the last or the snowstorm. Perfectly, so we're there to take care of it. It any uh any questions or concerns from any of the town board members? On in favor of consenting to laying out of Garden Way. Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for twenty twenty-two oh forty-seven reappointing Scott Bergen to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll make the motion.
And you, Ed, may I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey. Um we uh. Made an error, a small error in our reorg meeting, and we appointed him as the chair. And neglected to appoint him to the board, so it's just a slight clean up here. And again, thank you, Scott, for taking this on. And the board does an excellent job for us. Any further discussion, any questions from anybody? All in favor? Uh passes unanimous. Uh any, any against or? Okay, it passes unanimously, Joan. Um I need a uh motion for twenty twenty-two oh forty-eight. For the computer upgrade for this building and highway departments. Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
I can.
Thanks, Ed. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor? I, any opposed? It passes unanimously, Joan. I will, uh, I need a motion for our twenty twenty-two oh forty-nine amendment to the transfer station fee schedule.
I'll make that.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Uh any discussion or questions? On favor? Hi, any opposed? So move unanimously. I will make a motion for twenty twenty-two oh fifty for our assessors to grant senior citizens exemptions for twenty twenty-two. Um may I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. Uh this is just a a state either executive order or law allowing us to to carry over from last year. So seniors don't have to come in during the pandemic. Uh Warren prepared this resolution for us. All in favor? I, any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you. Um I need a motion for twenty twenty-two oh fifty-one to purchase backup clients. Backup appliance for computer server. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thanks, Ed. Any discussion or questions?
I just have a stupid question. Is there any world where this ever exists on the cloud or that's not possible?
No, it does exist in the cloud. The, basically, the. Backup appliance. Manages the backing up of all the data on the servers that are shared between the village and town. That data is both stored locally as a backup as well as put out onto the cloud.
So we just need, we need more capacity.
We, well, we need more capacity plus the the gadget we have now is out of warranty. And so, and so it's, and it's five years old, it's obsolete, et cetera, et cetera. So this way we'll have something that's larger capacity in warranty and easily, more easily replaceable because it's new.
Got it.
If it fails. But, you know, it the our backups are both local and also at a server that's remote. Which is what it means to be in the cloud.
Thank you, Alan. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? I, any against or? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I'll make the motion for twenty twenty-two oh fifty-two to amend our uh resolution twenty twenty-two oh oh eight. For our town board liaison assignments. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Basically, this just adds Ed as the transfer station, the excellent liaison to the transfer station. Any further questions? All in favor of Ed being liaison to the transfer?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion twenty twenty-two oh fifty-three to hire a temporary part-time seasonal maintenance department employee.
Make that motion.
Yeah, Ed, may I have a second? Thanks, Chance. Is there any um? Further in questions or concerns, comments from the town board? On favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for twenty twenty-two oh fifty-four to hire a temporary part-time seasonal maintenance department worker. Thank you, Ed. This is a second maintenance worker. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor? I, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Um I will make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh fifty-five for our preliminary accounts payable extracts. One C. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joshie. Uh any, any questions or concerns from the town board? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh fifty-six. For our preliminary accounts payable abstracts one D. May I have a a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Are there any questions or comments from the town board? All in favor? It passes unanimously. I will make a motion for twenty twenty-two oh fifty-seven. For our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? I, any opposed? Um it passes unanimously. I will make a motion for twenty twenty-two oh fifty-eight for budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
All uh on favor? I, any? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next one, we have to table and move to the table to the next.
Okay, we'll take all that. I had something, oh, um. We have. Okay, I don't need to discuss that. Um we wanna go back on to Michael's. Presentation on our um. The white paper on the field, if that's okay. And then we can go back to new business and and public comments. All right, Michael, take it away.
Um, so I I I'll talk a bit about my personal path toward getting. Toward advocating for an artificial turf field. When this process began and I and several people from the soccer league were participating with Sally's working group. Uh when the master plan was being developed before it had been approved. Uh there were a number of us that had some real concerns about artificial turf. I think that was around two thousand eight or two thousand nine. And there had been some. Significant and important questions that were being asked by communities about turf fields. And there were not a lot of answers at that point. So that's, I started uh being very skeptical and probably negative toward the idea of an artificial turf field. What is it, almost? Um well, a little more than a decade ago. Um what has happened since then? Is that there have been a lot of peer-reviewed studies on the effects of the materials in in these fields. Um done by the state of California, the government of the Netherlands, the state of New York, the state of of Connecticut. Um that really look into the questions that were being asked. And the answers have been. Of the science that it it's not dangerous. So. As far as the materials. And what they're composed of and kids playing on them and what happens. Um, there's a lot of science that says fields are safe. And it's peer-reviewed. It's not just done by the the manufacturers. The other thing that's happened in that little more than a decade is. I along some other volunteers in the Rhinebeck Soccer League have been trying to keep natural grass fields playable. At the town's field at at Stone Church. And the two fields that are at this and occasionally working at on the field at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School. And um. Have really run into how the climate has changed. How the uses of our league in in terms of demand for time and space in the field have changed. And uh what grass can actually handle. In the last meeting where we had. Uh uh Jim come from the car companies, I asked him a question because they build natural grass fields as well. And I said, how many natural glass grass fields would need to be built to handle the traffic? That's being anticipated for this artificial turf field. And he said five to seven. I thought it was three, but five to seven it is. Is a really significant number. So if we think about.
Michael, you mean that we would need six fields? National nat- natural grass fields. Somebody mute, please. I don't know what that, what is that? Was that a dog?
It sounds like there's there's reverb coming somewhere, but.
Um you would need to be five grass fields to have the use out of one. Artificial turf field, so that's six fields being fertilized, mown, watered, cared for. Okay.
Yeah. And you'd have to rotate the use of those. So you not only would you have to build them all, but then you'd have.
Have a white paper for us that has all this in it or?
Well, I. That was something that 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 John said, I, you know, I mean, Jim said, there is information out there, which I will look for and try and find in terms of. What? Kind of traffic. A turf field versus a grass field can support. But these are guys who build them both, so I, you know, I think. Even if it's three fields. Um what you have to think about is the envi- environmental impact of mowing twice weekly during the grow- growing season. Three acres of land. Putting fifty-two thousand gallons of water on each of those fields per week. To keep the grass growing so that it can pour at the traffic. And then it needs to be fertilized, have herbicide to keep the broadleaf uh clovers from invading. And have insecticide put on it yearly. So there's a huge negative environmental impact to natural grass for sports fields. It's not, it's not the same as. We plant a section of grass in the park and mow it. A couple of times a month so pe- people can go out and walk their dogs and throw a frisbee. To be able to play sports where kids are wearing cleats, the grass needs an enormous amount of support to stay alive. And. From the perspective of someone who's been trying to do this for the soccer league, the town does not have the infrastructure or money to support. That activity. So one of the things you're buying with the bond is. Twelve to fifteen years of maintenance. Mowing, watering. That you don't have to do. It's 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 an important consideration from both the environmental and logistical um cash side of it.
Can you put up the page that you, uh can you share with us and we could just go through it? Joan has posted it to our website. Um so anybody from the public who is interested in why we are considering or why why we have. Why the Recreation Park Committee has recommended a turf field and why the town board is bonding for one. See this, this, this document. Um Joan has also sent it out to us and Warren and Melody Moore and Gretchen, the um. Clerk for the plan board.
Every time we use the word turf, I assume we're talking about artificial.
Every time I use the word turf, I'm talking about artificial and when I say natural grass.
It's to me, they're synonyms, but.
I know, I'm sorry. It's difficult for me to figure, too.
So I have a question. When we first. Talked about turf fields, artificial turf fields. Ten years ago or whatever, uh there were a number of issues with them because kids were getting. Injured on them. Because of the um hardness of the surface and the surface material and so on and so. And I understand that's no longer the case. The composition of the fields have changed, and my question is how have they changed?
So when, when, yeah, when AstroTurf, and it gets its name because they rolled out a carpet on the concrete floor of the Astrodome. And people played uh. Played tackle football on it without any kind of rubber, without any kind of, they just roll out a carpet of grass. Um the the products have come a long way since then. So people, when the products first came out. His and and professional athletes were were getting injured because of what was underneath the the carpet. And in most cases, it was blacktop or uh concrete. This installation is uh is a very different animal. And that isn't to say that people don't get hurt playing team contact sports, which soccer and lacrosse are all. Of those things. And there are injuries that are more common on artificial turf. That you pass. People typically don't get the kind of abrasion injuries when they fall on. Natural grass that they do sometimes when they fall on turf. But those aren't broken bones and they're not um. You know, ligament damage and the kind of things that that people were, and all those questions were important. When we've, when we were first looking at this. Those questions hadn't been answered, and the technology of how these fields were being built had not been uh had not grown enough. To the state of where.
Also, it's feels differently. Um the old artificial turf was almost akin to a. To a. A mutt like a a a house mat, what what?
Flush carpet.
Yeah, it was very hard and plastic. This has, and we had a sample at Town Hall. This is soft and almost papery feeling. Now, it's a soft um. Papery carpet feel to it.
But so I assume the chemical composition then is different now than it was then.
Somewhat, the markings are a little bit different. The the blades of grass are still um plastics. Um sometimes polyester. Oh, but what's been studied? Is what kind of transmission is happening between athletes? And those surfaces and the infill, and that's what's really been studied over the last tens. And there's. The, you know, I attached to the document that I gave to you guys, the New York State Department of Health study. On grass turf and uh chrome rubber infill. And, you know, rather than me talk about it, read it, follow the the science. Um there is a committee that's meeting. Um, there is a committee that's meeting yearly in California to discuss this and they're doing more studies. So it's something that's being really carefully looked at. And so far, nobody's come up with any really big red flags at all.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions about the project or the environmental impacts? One of the concerns that I've heard, not tonight, but at other points is how the, the material of the carpet gets, gets used after its, its useful life.
Um.
Yeah. So it's, a lot of it is made from recycled materials and then there are, um, places where it's being reused and recycled at the end of its functional life as a sports field, um, carpet. So that is a big part of the consideration of, of how this gets treated. Um, and its replacement is something that, um, I'm hoping that this, the, the users of this field will contribute to so that when it comes time to replace, we have generated enough, the, uh, funds required to, to pay for the replacement carpet.
I don't know, like what we're looking at.
Um, so it's all based on UV. Um, in this, in this, in this part of the country in the Northeast, they are, they're guaranteed for eight to twelve years. They typically last longer. There are plenty of fields that are at fifteen years and still playable. Um, it, it depends on how much sun it gets, how we treat it. Um, and, uh, but is, I think it's, uh, it's guaranteed for an eight to twelve year period depending on which surface we choose.
So what did you say, say, Michael? Uh, hold on, Eleanor. What did you say, Michael? Um, in twelve to fifteen years, ten to fifteen years?
Uh, the, the fields are lasting fifteen years and longer. They're guaranteed eight to twelve, depending on which product you decide to use in the, in the, for the carpet.
Eleanor, you have a question? Eleanor, you have a question? Hold on. You're muted, Eleanor. You have to unmute yourself.
I unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, just wanted to say that while I was listening to this, I Googled the question and it says in July, the EPA, and this was in twenty nineteen, acknowledged that synthetic turf contains toxic chemicals, some of which are known to cause cancer. The EPA report was not a formal risk assessment and did not address the potential harm. And the other thing I Googled and, you know, I mean, I'm just Googling this. So, you know, it might not be true. It might be.
No, it's true.
They're very hard to dispose of these and that most of them do end up in the law, at the landfills, most of these turf stuff. That's another thing that we should double check and make sure that they're truly being recycled. Thank you.
Um, so
Thanks, Eleanor.
The plastics, the plastics that are in the, this, in, in the material do have VOCs. And if you light them on fire or pour acid on them and then breathe the fumes, they, they are toxic. The, the studies that have been done is whether those chemicals are in any way getting into the bodies of athletes through the use that this material is, is, is being used for. You know, the plastic bottle you drink your water out of has volatile organic compounds in it. It, it is inert and it doesn't go into the water. So you're safe. The studies that have.
Unless it gets, unless it gets heated, then it leaches in.
Right. But so the, 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 the studies that have been done on turf is to determine whether these materials are getting into people's bodies. And they've even done studies where they take the materials and subject them to what it would, what it would be like if you ingested them. So if kids are getting this, the, the stuff inside their body, whether there's any transference of this stuff and they're not finding it to be true. Those are all the questions that we were considering when we were, when I was feeling very negative about it ten years. But I, 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 I think that that's true and you will Google these things and find that these kind of plastics do have those things in them. The question is, can they get from the plastic into your body? Or into the environment and they're very stable.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any questions or comments, town board members? Um, are we all on board with supporting a, uh, artificial field at this point as recommended to us by the Thompson Mazarella Park and the Recreation Commission?
I think so. I, I look forward to seeing, uh, Michael's white paper, but I think so.
Yeah.
Alan?
Yes, I agree, I agree with Johnson. I look forward to reading more.
Well, it's been, um, it's been sent to you. So you have it in your inboxes and it's also on our website. Um, all right. Um, any other questions? Um, thank you.
Can I just say, Eleanor, if you have any other questions about that, that you want more information about the studies that have been, you can reach out to me directly and I'll be happy to provide them to you.
Michael, any studies you have should be sent to the clerk so they could be put on our website, too.
Yeah, the best place to start is with that New York State Department of Health document. It leads to lots of different studies that have been, they're, they're resourcing other stuff. So that's a good place to start.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for doing this. It seems like we're getting closer and you and Josh will work with Warren this week to make sure that we're in shape for our next town board meeting on the fourteenth. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, let me say, are there any, uh, is there any new business before the town board? Any town board members or our highway superintendent or our clerk?
No, the, the only thing I have to bring up is the agenda item fourteen. We have to get a security system for the pavilion. There's been multiple break-ins and we're trying to hone in on what the best system is related to what other standard security systems we have elsewhere.
Break-ins and, and break-ins and vandalism.
Vandalism, yes.
Yeah.
So, um, the, the reality is, is that, uh, it's a remote location in the middle of the park. We, we're debating whether it has internet connectivity with other things and whether it's a standalone system and blah, blah, blah. So hopefully we'll nail that down before the next town board meeting.
Okay, close. We're almost there.
Great. Um, is there, uh, any, um, public comment on any non-agenda items? Um, okay, uh, no other questions from the public? Uh, okay, Nancy Kelly, our historian just joined us. Nancy, were you here for anything specific or did you have a question for us? You're on mute, Nancy, if you wanted to speak. Uh, we're waiting for Nancy to unmute. So, um, this white paper, short white paper is published on our website. This is in reaction to several residents contacting us expressing, um, disappointment that we're not going with the grass field. And, um, basically we believe, uh, that the turf field will be more carbon neutral than a grass field. Hi, Nancy.
Hello.
Did you have a question for us or did you want to bring something up?
Uh, no, I just wanted to, uh, to attend the meeting.
Okay. Well, it's almost over. We start at six. So, um, okay, any other public comment or questions or issues, anything from the town board or anyone on the meeting? Really want to thank everyone for coming. Thank you, Michael, town board members. Uh, we will see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, everybody.
Night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.